Good evening. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District, and I'd like to welcome everyone here to our meeting. I'm going to go through a script, and then I will have Mr. Shero, I'll introduce him, and we'll have our invocation. But I just wanted to make sure I put on the record that tonight we are here for our regular board meeting, and I want to welcome everyone that's here, as well as those that are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4, and we appreciate all of you and your interest in our students. All the items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. As you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board meeting workshop last week. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public, not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments on an agenda item. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are being recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I'll also ask you, as I remind myself and our fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Remember, if we do speak on something, item, that's not on our agenda, please understand that under our open records, open meetings laws, that we cannot reply except to thank you for your comments. We appreciate your interest in activities, our students, and the business of our district. With that, we have a quorum. All our board members are here, and I will call on now Paul Shero, Minister of Southgate Church of Christ, to give us our invocation.
Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for you and who you are and what you've done for us. We thank you, Father, that we live in this community, a world full of chaos. We have peace, and a world full of poverty. We have plenty to eat, and we thank you, Father, for the opportunities that are given to us because of these blessings. Thank you, Father, for these, our neighbors, who take time and make the big effort of making sure that our children are well-educated and safe, and we ask you, Father, to give them special blessing. Tonight, Father, we ask for wisdom, especially for these, our neighbors. We ask you, Father, to bless them with wisdom as they make the sometimes difficult decisions they need to make. We ask you, Father, to give us courage to face difficult problems, and we ask you, Father, to give us confidence and holiness that we will do what's right. Help us, Father, to know what's right. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Shero. Always appreciate our ministers that take time to come help us with our prayers for our board meetings and for your support of our school district. School doesn't start until later on this week, so we don't have any of our elementary students here to help us with our pledge, so I will lead us in our pledge to the United States and Texas. Flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our agenda at this time has some recognitions, and one of our recognitions, as far as our Secondary Teacher of the Year, as I understand we're going to do that next month, okay? Because she is not going to be here, so we want to make sure we do that when she can be here. I'll now turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk for recognition of San Angelo Reads.
Good evening, Mr. Parker and distinguished members of the board. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing two outstanding community partners and supporters of public education and literacy, HEB and Vivid Pop Balloons. With our first-ever year to do the San Angelo Reads Summer Book Patrol, these two community partners took a chance on an idea to inspire our students to read during the summer and helped us to knock it out of the park. Thank you to HEB and Vivid Pop for helping an idea for making reading fun for our students to become something substantial, meaningful, and impactful. By contributing to this first-ever SAISD Summer Book Patrol with your ideas, energy, and dedication, you helped us to not only ignite a love of literacy, but also to make students feel special and connected to our schools during the summer months. For those who didn't get a chance to attend one of the deliveries, the children's and families faces and excitement were a testament to this. HEB helped us by providing healthy snacks and goodie bags, not only for the child selected for the book delivery, but for every child in the household, and these goodie bags were packed full of nutritious options and HEBuddy fun. And Vivid Pop provided beautiful balloon bouquets for each student. Children truly lit up when they saw the special colorful balloons, and that was a lot of balloons and a lot of organizing. Your contributions really helped us to elevate this summer program, to stand out to the kiddos and their families, and for this, we thank you. Tonight, we are honored to have joining us and accepting this recognition for HEB, Katie Canaday, and accepting for her newly-launched business, Vivid Pop, San Angelo Entrepreneur, Tammy Merwin. Dr. Detloff, at this time, would you please help me recognize HEB and Vivid Pop Balloon Design and Decoration? Sorry, I didn't say the full name before. Katie and Tammy, we would like you to come up and come forward for a group photo as well. So please join me in giving HEB and Vivid Pop a very appreciative round of applause. Thank you so much. Thanks, ladies.
Dr. Detloff, would you help direct them so they can come around? We can shake their hands.
Let's see, Mr. Parker, I know some of our great partners are, some are still in the room, and some have just left, but I just want to brag on the great partnerships. I had the privilege, along with many of our other cabinet members in this room, to attend some of our Summer Book Patrol events, and the, just the sheer delight on our students' faces as we deliver the balloons, as well as just the books, and we understand that promoting literacy at the home is just a critical effort in the partnerships that we have with our families and community members, and it's going to help students really elevate their reading and comprehension skills as we move forward. So the Summer Book Patrol was just a fun event, and without our community partners, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you, HEB. Thank you, Vivid Pops. It was an incredible event, and we just want to celebrate all you do for us, so thank you.
We now need to approve our minutes from our special finance pre-agenda meeting for July 12, 2021, and our regular board meeting for July 19, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dindel, a second by Dr. Kingman, to approve our minutes. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comments on this agenda item? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. This is now the time that I mentioned in my earlier comments for anyone that might want to come forward and offer public comments on any topics that are not on our agenda for our meeting tonight. I don't think anyone signed up, and no one is coming forward, so we'll move forward. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ritter for update on academic programs.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. So tonight, we wanted to just highlight some recent happenings with academic support and programs on our campuses. I'm going to make sure this is working. Yes, awesome. So we are wrapping up that beginning-of-year support for all of our teachers, and I just have to say what an amazing job that Dr. Gomez and her team did, also with helping with all of the professional learning and the New Teacher Academy, the New to District Academy. And then, on the campuses this year, we allowed our principals to have a little more time with their staff coming back, and they spent a lot of time just trying to help everybody get settled and ready to go for the school year, and these are just a few of the pictures, going out and seeing what some of them were doing across the district. We were fortunate to have Apple Classroom and Apple Coaches in our district, and we were their first district that they have actually been in-person to since COVID hit. So we had coaches from Apple there with our high school teachers, working with our Central and our Lakeview teachers, and they're all learning how to move forward with Apple Classroom. We'll hear a little bit more about that in a minute. We worked with, over on the right, you can see there's Cherie, with one of our teachers, and just doing some deep dives into unit planning and design for planning forward and spending some time getting really familiar with their standards and their instructional resources with the TEACs Resource System for unit planning and design of instruction, and then innovative learning spaces. This is just a great focus of ours for the year, and it was exciting to get to go. There in the middle, we're looking at some administrators from Lakeview, and just every space in that building, they're really trying to, just across the district, that our administrators are trying to just make our areas innovative and welcoming, and I think you're going to be pleased to see some of the changes and things that are across the district this year. I know that we are, and it's just really exciting. It's just, it feels great out there that people are excited for school to start. And then up in the right corner, this was a funny picture, Glen Middle School, one of Mr. Columbach's rotations was an escape room, and so the teachers had to escape from the escape room, and they were working on it from the, and they had the radio and giving them clues when they needed it. It was just so much fun. They had a great time, and so just, I think the principals were really appreciative of the things that we modeled through our Leadership Academy as well, to help show them some things they could do with their teachers coming back, and then the teachers are also doing some of those things then back in their classroom. I think they all left from that at Glen with how can we go and do a real escape room with our kids, so that was really fun. So an update on our digital innovation initiative. As you know, that we have recently purchased iPads, so we've purchased 450 teacher iPads and Apple TVs for secondary classrooms, and these are all now in the hands of the teachers. They've had them for a couple of weeks now. High school distribution Apple Coach training was last week. Middle school teachers will be receiving their devices and Apple Coach training after school starts. So I wanted you to know that we are doing Apple Coach training with Apple Coaches in our district once a month for all of our high school and our middle school teachers who received their iPads to learn how to really utilize the Apple Classroom, where they're designing their instruction on the Apple, on their iPad, and delivering it straight to the students onto their iPads. So they were really blown away with some of the opportunities and things that they're going to get to do with their students. We've ordered, and most already here, but 6,025 iPads for students since last December, and this also includes replacement ones for older classroom devices that we have, some at the elementary level, but the bulk of that are the individual student devices that will provide the student one-to-one in secondary. So by the middle of this year, we're going to have all of our secondary students with their iPad that they get to keep and have with them for instruction and for their resources to be made available. High school kids will start getting, those students are getting theirs the first week of school, so we'll be taking some pictures and excited to share that and know that those kiddos are really excited about that. And then elementary students will be getting theirs next fall, but we are moving forward with getting the teachers theirs pretty quickly so that they can start taking advantage of the training and learning how to use their iPads as well. And just a note that, you know, we were just so fortunate to be able to have the funding, the SER Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, and our Emergency Connectivity Fund Grant that Charlene and her team have done such a great job, and also just Dr. McFarland and his team, and getting a lot of the reimbursement monies that come with that grant to help us move this forward in our district. And then I'm going to ask Whitney Watson Wood to come up and talk a little bit about our San Angelo Reads. We're sharing some pictures with you of the different events, and I also want to say thank you so much to Whitney, Molly, and the team. This couldn't have happened without them, and they were just so diligent, even through challenges with COVID and things that were going on, really made it a priority in partnering with the curriculum and instruction team and others in our building who were just out there making this happen, and it was so much fun. Every week, a book patrol going to homes of students that were selected through a nomination process, for them to get a bag of books and the balloons from Vivid Pop, and on one of them, it was even a student's birthday, and we took him a little birthday cake, so. Whitney, you want to say anymore about this?
I also want to say, too, Jana's team was very instrumental in this, specifically Ashley Crane and Amber Allenbar were incredible help. But just to kind of recap, we delivered over 250 books to students from all 17 of our elementary campuses. We know that during summer, there tends to be some learning loss, so this was one way to help with that, and we also know that a lot of our kiddos are under resourced, so this was helping get books in the hands of kiddos. So it was one fun way to do it, but it had important purpose. And then just wanted to also touch on, you know, we had those two pop-up events. We're looking at doing another one in the fall. That was a great way to connect with our families and share and inspire a love of reading, but also be able to have those conversations with families about why modeling reading is important and that sort of thing, so it was really helpful to do that directly with our families. And to just kind of give you a brief snippet of what we're looking at for Fall 2021 plans, we're looking at continuing our goal to give every student in elementary a book of their very own by grade-level giveaways. We started that last year. We already have some in the works this year. We're really excited about that. Again, it goes back to not every child has that access to books at home. We really want to help do that because we know it's important for them to be able to read at home and for enjoyment. And then we're also reviewing our secondary plan and how we're going to continue inspiring it at our middle schools and high schools as well, and other opportunities. We're looking at ways to help provide resources for dyslexia and LEP students. So we're looking at new ways to really continue this community-wide initiative through this year. And also, be marking your calendar, we will celebrate San Angelo Reads Day every year, although we kicked it off with our first one last year. We will have it again December 9th again this year. So we're going to continue it. It wasn't just a one-year thing, and it's going to continue inspiring a love of reading.
And just a note, thought you might like to hear a little bit about our desk donate educational supplies for kids, that they donated $71,260 towards school supplies, and this money was divided among the campuses based on their free and reduced numbers. So each campus received, and we do this every year, but I know that this year, it was just so very, very appreciated, and even with extra supplies that were collected at the area Walmart, they were able to get even more supplies to the campuses, and they're already receiving lots of requests for those from campuses, from families. So just to note that parents can, all they have to do is just talk to the school counselor, talk to their home campus school, and if supplies are needed, then we will provide them the supplies that they need, and it includes backpacks, lunch kits, all needed supplies for classroom and home use. And then also this year, we are continuing, as last year, free breakfast and lunch for all students, universal free breakfast and lunch for all students in the district. So that's another, a really positive thing that's going to help our families. And lastly, just a reminder about our student registration verification of enrollment. We've had relatively, it's stronger now. We didn't have a great turnout earlier in the summer, but people are still coming to campuses, registering their students or verifying their enrollment if they're existing students, and making sure that we have updated information. So campus staff are there and available to assist parents with setting up and updating their information in Home Access Center, which is what we use to help parents keep things updated for our student information system, and that's a platform that houses all of our student data, contact information, grades, and attendance information. Parents can go to their child's campus to register or update their information and get help with the process. It's really important that we do have current contact information for our families, and so that we can also provide them updates and information from the district. That information is, it's just so important that our families get that updated for us. And we just wanted everyone to know that we are here to help your child get started. Just go to the campus, and someone is going to help you to get registered or to verify your enrollment. And so I know that today and tomorrow, we're having lots of the Meet the Teacher events in the elementary schools. Our secondary campuses did schedules and rollouts last week, and we've had a great turnout, so we look forward to updating you more with how the first day of school is going, which is going to be Wednesday, so we're looking forward to that day. So that is it. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Ritter?
Mr. Parker, I just have a comment, if I can get my technology working in front of me. I'm just thrilled that we are empowering SAISD students with high-quality innovative tools to be successful in not only their future, but in the future marketplace, in graduation, in military, whatever field they choose as a post-secondary option. So providing these smart devices and putting them in the hands of all students is just incredible, and it really aligns exactly to our mission of engaging students in a relevant and inspiring education. So these tools will help us do that, and I'm just thrilled at the opportunities that our students will have moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, for that report. Dr. Detloff, I think has a few words on our partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, this morning, I had the privilege to have a one-on-one meeting with Colonel Matthew Rauman, the base commander at Goodfellow Air Force Base. So it was a pleasure to get to visit with him and talk about the mission here at Goodfellow, and also how to continue our strong partnerships they have in the community and with SAISD. Also, I want to note that Colonel Rauman and many Goodfellow leadership participated in our convocation last week as well, so it continues to be a privilege and a blessing to have Goodfellow as partners with our school district. Thank you.
We now need to consider our consent items. We have consent items A through H. These are items that we discussed in our pre-agenda workshop and decided to put on our, on the consent items tonight, that we didn't need to have further information. I'll go through those, and then we'll see if there's, and we'll get a motion. Our consent items, A is donations, B ratified administrations, action, and sale of properties, C, consider criteria for redistricting political boundaries, D, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2021 and 2022, and that will include two others that we have a supplemental sheet before us that'll go into that particular agenda item. E, consider T-Test certified appraisers. F, consider bid 21-012 office classroom supplies and furniture. G, consider bid 21-013 printer cartridges. H, consider bid 21-016 wireless radio, WAN maintenance and repair. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Lehman, and a second by Mr. Dindel to approve consent items A through H. Is there any other board discussion on these items? Is there any public comment on any of these items? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Agenda item nine, consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for June 2021 and July 2021.
Motion to approve the bills, accounts, and financial statements for June 2021 and July 2021. Just as a reminder, this was all discussed at our pre-agenda workshop last week, and if you go to our district website underneath District and Financial Transparency, you can see all of these statements, as well as our checkbook for the entire public to see.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman, for your motion, and a second by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion? If not, is there any public comment on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next up is consider bid 21-017 intrusion and fire alarm monitoring services. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, member of the board. Tonight, I bring you bid 21-017 intrusion and fire alarm monitoring services. San Angelo ISD currently has 32 properties that are monitored for both fire and intrusion. This bid is to secure 24-hour monitoring services for these properties. An RFP was posted to businesses that perform this type of service. We had two bidders respond for this service. They included Intertel and VGI. This is a three-year contract for the period beginning September 21st and going through August of 2024, with the option to renew for two one-year renewals. The administration recommends the intrusion and fire alarm services contract be awarded to Intertel of San Angelo. Y'all have any questions over any of that?
Mr. Henry, I did send you a note today with a question of whether both bidders were bidding on the same thing, and I think you answered that you checked, and we don't have any confusion with that.
Yes, they both, we sent out a spreadsheet, and they both filled out the same spreadsheet. There were a couple items that apparently were missing off of there, but they did bid on the exact same properties. Maintenance did meet with Intertel last week to start hammering out the details, and then we called them today to double-check and make sure that any questions that you had were answered, and I guess our main question was, will the price stay, is this the final price? And they said yes.
Okay.
All things will be included. Should be seamless.
So as far as we know, both bidders bid on the same things, and the prices that we have here are going to stay the same.
Yes, sir.
Correct. All right. Do we have any, do I hear a motion on this item?
Move to recommend the intrusion and fire alarm monitoring service contract go to Intertel of San Angelo.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Dindel, a second by Dr. Kingman, in regard to the We have a motion by Mr. Dindel, a second by Dr. Kingman, in regard to the intrusion and fire alarm monitoring services. Is there any other board discussion on this item? Is there any public comment, but any one about this item? I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Henry. All right, we're going to, I'm going to go into executive session for just a second, and so we'll, I don't think we'll be gone long, and we will, I'll have, we'll have a quick recess. Oh, we're going, let me call out the right numbers. Under Texas Government Code for Personnel, 551.074, and also perhaps consultation with attorneys, 551.071. All right, we're back from executive session. We took no action. We took no votes. I'll read our announcements. We have a special meeting to adopt a budget on August 30th. All right, well, our finance and pre-agenda workshop on September 13th, our regular board meeting on September 20th, and Tasa Tasby Convention on September 23rd to 25th in Dallas, Texas. Unless there's anything else, I will, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.